I would like to, I would like to call this board, uh, village board meeting of Thursday, February 2nd, 2023 to order. Will the crowd please, please take the role?
Mayor Kolkar.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui. Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Miratato.
Here.
Trustee Pojek.
Here.
Trustee Schroder.
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
We now move to community announcements. Mr. Smith. Trustee Smith.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be this Saturday, February 4th at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302. Glendale Heights Police Department, along with numerous other police departments across the country, have seen an uptick in people posting messages online and on social media instead of calling 911. These platforms are not monitored 24/7, and in times of emergency, every second counts. Please remember that the Glendale Heights Police Department cannot take a crime report over social media. In order to make a report, please contact the non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. If you need immediate assistance or have an emergency, please remember to always call 911 and don't rely on social media. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Siddiqui.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is asking residents to check on their relatives and friends to assure they are not in need of assistance in extreme weather conditions. Glendale Heights has a warning, warming shelter in place and is ready to assist the needs of our residents. For more information, call the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. As a reminder, in any emergency, you should always call 911 for immediate assistance. During periods of extreme weather, the police department will activate the senior call list to check on senior citizens. Seniors or their family members may ask to be placed on this list by picking up a form at Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens, or by calling the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070, or the Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050.
Trustee Light.
Thank you. As a reminder to residents, please do not shovel snow, snow blow, or plow any snow into village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any snow for safe driving. If you have any questions, please call the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. Register by March 6th for the 2023 Glendale Heights Youth Baseball and Softball Season. We offer a variety of programs for youth between ages five and 14, ranging from T-ball to pony leagues. Team practices begin as early as April through June with postseason tournament in July. For more information, please contact the sports hub at 630-260-6060, or visit www.ghrec.org. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mayor Kolkar Schmidt, please.
The village of Glendale Heights has launched a new online records request system. The system powered by GovQA provides an efficient process for managing requests from residents and the media for public records in accordance with the Illinois Freedom of Information Act, or FOIA. It also reduces paperwork and allows residents to track the requests online. For more information or to submit a request online, please visit the village's transparency page on our website at www.glandalehighs.org, or call 630-260-6000. Thank you.
Trustee Maritato, please.
Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Register today for the Mother-Son Dance. Moms, put on your dancing shoes, and boys, come show off your best dance moves at our Candy Land themed dance. Enjoy an activity filled evening, complete with dinner and dessert. The Mother-Son Dance will be Friday, February 24th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Glendale Heights Golf Club. Please register by February 19th. The registration fee is $65 for residents, $75 for non-residents, and $30 for each additional child. For more information, please contact the sports hub at 630-260-6060. Dance the night away at the annual Daddy Daughter Dance on Saturday, February 25th, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Glendale Heights Golf Club. We will journey to Candy Land for this year's theme. The evening will include dancing, dinner, and every participant will receive a souvenir to remember the night. Register by February 19th. The registration fee is $65 for residents, $75 for non-residents, and $30 for each additional child. For more information, call the sports hub at 630-260-60. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Trustee Pojek.
The police department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during snowfall. There's no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There's no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more, and there's no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding the winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department, non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Trustee Schroder, please.
Thank you. Senior citizens aged 65 or better are encouraged to apply for the Senior Citizens Utility Tax Rebate Program. Qualifying applicants will receive a $75 rebate check as part of this program if they meet the following guidelines. You must be age 65 or better, honor before December the 31st, 2022, or have a spouse who is age 65. You must have lived in Glendale Heights for all of 2022 as either an owner or a renter, have earned no more than $45,000 of gross income during 2022, and have utility bills and paid in their names. Now, applications are being accepted now through April the 30th. If you have any questions, please contact the Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050, or the Finance Department at 630-260-6000. Thank you.
You're welcome. Number two proclamations. We have the following proclamation. A proclamation to proclaim the month of February as American Heart Month. Number two, a proclamation to proclaim the month of February as Black History Month. Three, a proclamation to proclaim the month of February as Punjabi Language Month. Four, a proclamation to proclaim the week of February 12 to 18, 2023 as National Salute to Veterans/Patients. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. I already signed.
Go for it.
Uh, next is a presentation by Ms. Jessica. She is our newest recreation supervisor in the Leisure Services Department and is in charge of special event here at the village on Valentine's for veterans. Ms. Jessica, you are here.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And good evening to everyone who's here. For anyone who doesn't know me, like the mayor said, my name is Jessica Marisich, and I am a recreation supervisor for the Leisure Services Department, and in that role, I work on a number of community events for the village. Hello. There we go. Let's try that again. As the mayor proclaimed, February 12th through 18th is National Salute to Veteran Patients Week in Glendale Heights. To show their support, the residents of Glendale Heights and surrounding communities took time out of their days to send a little appreciation through Valentine's. The idea to collect Valentine's started in the village over 20 years ago. This year has been my first year of involvement in the Valentine's for Veterans program, and it has been a truly heartwarming experience seeing all of the organizations and volunteers give back to the veterans. We collected hundreds of Valentine's from residents, schools, clubs, businesses, and organizations, all in hopes of making the veterans who receive them feel loved and appreciated. I want to take this opportunity to give a big thank you to everyone who participated, which includes but is not limited to the Glenbard Park, uh, the Glenbard District 87, Mark Ward School District 15, Queen Bee School District 16, St. Matthew's Parish School, the Junior Women's Club, the Kiwanis Club, Club Scout PAC 420, Glendale Heights Sports Hub Preschool, and the Center for Senior Citizens. All of the Valentine's collected will be mailed to a number of Illinois veteran homes and veteran hospitals. Each Valentine, wherever it ends up, will show the veteran that they are remembered and appreciated. Thank you again to everyone who dropped off their Valentine's. We brought in a few today for the community to enjoy. Mayor, if you haven't already noticed, you and the board all have some Valentine's in front of you if you would like to pick a few and share them with the crowd.
Very beautiful. I like all these three.
Mayor, if you want to read what's inside the envelope?
Happy Valentine Day. Sending lots of love. Your sacrifice for this country and way of freedom is in how you, what's this? Is it?
Incredibly.
Incredibly.
Valuable.
Valuable and if so grateful for
Yeah, I'm so grateful.
Everything, every day, you know.
It's a hard one to read.
Lillian, beautiful. Happy Valentine. The second one, you know, inside, yeah, this is better. Thank you for all that you have done for all of us. I would not be able to live the life I do today without all of your hard work. I appreciate your, you forever. Thank you. I love you. Hila Era Glenbar South High School student. Beautiful, you know. And third one, dear veterans, thank you for serving in our country's wars. Beautiful, you know, heart, purple. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mayor and the board, for this opportunity to speak a little bit about the program, and I hope you all have a good night as well.
Anybody else want to read some?
Um, tonight, I have to go for
We want to see if they want to read their Anybody else want to read their Valentine?
Sure.
Dear veteran, thank you for protecting our country. You are so brave and caring. Thank you for being so helpful to our country. I hope you have a great Valentine's Day. And sincerely, Maddie. Here's another one. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you so much for fighting for this country. You have made so many sacrifices, and they do not go unnoticed. It truly means so much to us that you, you are so brave. Happy Valentine's Day. Very nice.
Fine. Happy Valentine's Day. I hope you have a wonderful day full of love and appreciation. Thank you for your service and your sacrifices for our happiness. Please know how much you are respected and admired. All her love. Caitlin.
Okay, I have one here that's supposedly a joke. Do skunks celebrate Valentine's Day? Sure, they're very sentimental.
That's clever.
I like that one. And then I had, uh, let me see what this one is. Thank you so much for your amazing service to our country. Thank you so much that we can have freedom. You're the best, Emily. Oh, that's good.
The first one is someone who's really covering her bases. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you for saving beautiful, cute, and innocent animals. And then on the other side, thank you for your service to this country. Your bravery, sacrifice, and strength don't go unnoticed, and we will always be indebted to you and your family. And the second one is you are amazing, you are loved. Dear veteran, thank you for the sacrifices you have made for this beautiful country. Happy Valentine's Day.
We have one here, very nice card. Uh, it says, Dear Vet, thank you so much for all that you have done for us. This country would not run without all your hard work. I really hope that it has paid you back for your services, but I know that even if it did, it would never be able to fully pay you back for everything you have done. I am so grateful for you. Thank you. And then there's a whole bunch of stamps on the inside. And then another one is Happy Valentine's Day. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you so much with a whole bunch of hearts. I appreciate your bravery, kindness, courage, heroism. Thank you for your service.
First, I want to say thank you to all veterans. You're all appreciated, every single one of you. And I didn't get a joke in any of mine, so I'm kind of upset. So I'm going to read these anyway.
Well, here, read the signature.
No, that's okay. This one says, uh, real nice card. Uh, my name is Gio. I'm a student at Glenbard West High School, and I wanted to say thank you for your service and hope great things will come your way. Um, stay safe and keep pushing forward. Thank you. And this one was another nice one. It was, Dear Veteran, thank you for your service to our country. You provide us with safety and security, and we can't thank you enough. You are greatly appreciated. I hope you receive lots of love. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you. Again, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Mike. First of all, thanks to the veterans for their service, and I have an honor and privilege that I've been working for Department Veteran Affairs for the last 12 years. So, and these cards are really nice. Uh, the one which I got has Happy Valentine's. Thank you so much for what you have done. You are so strong for going through all you went through. You are amazing. Lily Glenbard West with the heart on it. Another one I have is, To whoever received this message, thank you and know that you are loved and appreciated. For your sacrifice allows millions of lives to be lived happily in peace and prosperity. Thank you. Uh, there is no name on it. Thanks.
Again, thank you all veterans for your service. We appreciate it. I've got one here that says, Thank you. Words cannot describe what brave souls you all have. Thank you for all that you have done to protect us. It truly means so, so much. Thank you, that thank, Happy Valentine's Day with hearts. No signature. And then to close out, Happy Valentine's Day. Side note, what do you call a sleeping cow? A bulldozer? Ha. Thank you for your service, Glenbard East.
Thank you to the board and the mayor for reading some of those cards out loud for everyone. Uh, those cards, as long, as well as all of the cards that you see in front of you will be mailed out tomorrow. Thank you guys once again, and enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, we also have the retirement of Deputy Chief Dave Bailey. Before I give it to Chief Pappas, I just want to thank Deputy Chief Dave Bailey for his great services to this village and wish him the best in his retirement. Happy retirement.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Village Board. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Village Board, for allowing us to do this today. Uh, today we're going to be recognizing the retirement of Deputy Chief David Bailey. His final walkout and final call were on Tuesday, January 31st. So if David, you can come forward, please. With Deputy Chief Bailey today, we have his lovely wife, Susan, his stepmother, Patty, his stepfather, Lonnie, his sisters, Pam, Teresa, and Amanda, his, his brother, Brian, his two brother-in-laws, his four nieces, and his cousin, Jimmy, along with his police family too. Going to tell you a little bit about David. David is a Glendale Heights kid. He grew up here as a child, and he went on to join the Marines, a veteran, where he was deployed numerous times around the world, including the Philippines. He was in the Marines where he started his tactical prowess. In October of 1995, David took the oath of office to become a police officer for the village of Glendale Heights. This is where he began this rewarding and distinguishing career. He also moved back to town. David's law enforcement career will span over 27 years. Along the way, he earned well over 25 commendations, including the coveted Chief's Award of Merit. Deputy Chief Bailey has held numerous assignments during his career. He was a patrolman, a special operations detective, a tactical officer, a bike officer, and a range officer. And in June of 2015, he was promoted to the rank of patrol sergeant, where he took the assignment as the firearm range master. And in December of 2021, David was promoted to his current position as Deputy Chief of the Patrol Operation Division. What separates Dave from any officer I have ever met is his tactical expertise. This expertise allowed him to be on impressive four separate SWAT teams. Being on one team is notable. Being on four is an astonishing achievement. Dave was an assistant commander on the ILEUS Weapons of Mass Destruction Special Response Team, an assistant commander for the DuPage County Special Operations Unit, a commander for the Felony Investigator Assistant Team, the Fiat SWAT Team, a commander for the Metropolitan Emergency Response and Investigative Team, the Metro Merritt SWAT Team. Because of this knowledge and leadership, Dave was tasked with merging and leading the Fiat SWAT Team and the DuPage County SWAT Team into the third largest SWAT unit in the state, the Metro, the Merritt Metro SWAT Team. That is truly impressive. Dave's commitment to help others was on display when he volunteered to go to Louisiana in 2005. He was on assignment with the ILEUS WMD Team after the devastation and hurricanes from Katrina and Rita to ensure the safety of the citizens there and to preserve order. Dave brought his distinguished, or his dedication back to this police department, where he instilled teamwork, discipline, and community engagement through his coaching and mentoring. His influence made a positive difference in our department and our community. David did have some fun at the police department. He also earned some nicknames. Mike Ariola used to call him Davy. Some people used to call him the Commodot. Some people used to call him 5'7". Some called him the Tactical Genius. He also did some goofy bird dance, which nobody knows where that came from. He had some weird thing that SWAT guys do when they go on the range, and he talked about how he knew everybody of the Philippines because when he was deployed there, he gave Hershey bars to all the kids. I don't know where the stories were coming from, but. All kidding aside, Dave Bailey is a man with a huge heart, willing to help anyone at any time. He should be proud of what he has accomplished. He honorably represented the village of Glendale Heights and the Glendale Heights Police Department for 27 years. We were lucky, I can't finish this part, but I'll try. We were lucky to be part of Dave's journey, and from all of us at the police department.
Just give him George.
No. Congratulations on that fantastic career. We are proud and humbled to have worked with you and to call you a friend.
Please, thank you very much. I have like 20 pages here, so. Um, Chief Pappas, thank you for those kind words. It's like you were standing over my shoulder when I was writing my speech, so there's a lot of that that I will, I will go ahead and skip. Um, I'm not good at making speeches, mostly in front of a, behind a podium. I'm good. Can you hear me? Can you hear me all right? Normally, I am up in front of a crowd, um, talking as loud as I can for instruction to our officers who stand behind me. I've taught most of the, uh, the department, our department, for the last 27 years. I have a lot of people to thank today, which I will. Chief Pappas has pretty much summed up my career, which is what I wrote, and we didn't even write it together. Um, my wife was helping me with this, making sure I had, you know, that the grammar was halfway right, and, you know, she's like, but you, you left out a lot of emotion. But I can tell you this, this is the best department that, um, that I've seen in my 27-year career. I also worked part-time for Campden Hills for about four years, and I have trained numerous officers throughout numerous agencies in DuPage County. So let me get on with what I had written. I'll skip to the boring parts of what Chief Pappas had already stated, because I feel that what I put in, in my speech, I, I, I feel is important to me and those who I mention. I spent the last 27 years serving the residents of Glendale Heights, the village of Glendale Heights, our police department, and the county of DuPage. In this service, I've had several opportunities that provided me the training and skills to better serve the community, the village, our police department, and the county. So I'd like to share my short story with you. Um, these have been the best years I have experienced, and the greatest opportunities I have been given by the people that allowed them and afforded them for me. As Chief Pappas said, I was hired in 1995, graduated academy with my friend, Mike Ariola. After working the road a while, a short time, I got to know the officers that I've been working with. One officer stood out with the resume that I thought was out of this world, and I thought to myself, I either want as lengthy of a resume or longer should I, you know, upon my retirement. Then officer was Ron Kerstein. Thank you, Ron, for being the first to inspire me in my career. Ron, such as myself through the years, um, had a lot of tasks, done a lot of things for our police department. He was K-9, he was a range officer, um, arson investigator. I mean, the list went on, and as a new officer, I was very impressed, and I thought, I want to be that person. And by the time that I retire, hopefully I have inspired others. As my career started, so did the opportunities granted to me. I appreciate all the opportunities I have been given, and I want to thank those responsible for the career that I ended with. As a probationary officer, I was sent to firearm school, firearm instructor school, which was, at the time, a rarity. In 2001, I became a detective for our special operations unit and dealt with and handled crimes mostly involving drugs, gangs, drugs and gangs, just to name a few. I want to thank Chief Roger Mabit and Sergeant Tom Biellas at the time for giving me the opportunity to join the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System Weapons of Mass Destruction Special Response Team, ILEUS WMD SRT Region Number Four. This task force was initiated by the state in Illinois in 2003 due to the attacks of September 11, 2001, and has been the template for other states to follow. During my tenure in ILEUS WMD SRT, During my tenure in ILEUS, I was sent to SWAT school and also learned technical aspects of nuclear, biological, chemical, and explosives training, also how to handle terrorist situations and mitigate them. I was sent to Nevada, Alabama, and New Mexico for training in these categories. This team was initially commanded by Jim Hartman of Naperville, and then Tom Gallenhue of Naperville, who is also now a close friend. In two thousand and five, as Chief Pappas had mentioned, Hurricane Katrina hit New Orleans. Our department allowed me to travel with ILEUS team to New Orleans and assist in search-and-rescue missions, as well as enforcing the laws. Those who were deployed in the area were sworn in as Louisiana State Police to lawfully accomplish these missions and tasks. I would like to thank the then-village president, Linda Jackson, for inviting me to the BEST Conference in Green Bay, Wisconsin, to give a presentation of my experiences while in New Orleans assisting in the aftermath of Hurricane Katrina. ILEUS Region Four WMD Team Commander Tom Gallenhue promoted me to the rank of team leader and then to assistant commander. When I left the team, I became an assessor for the ILEUS evaluations to evaluate other state-regional WMD teams. While I was on ILEUS, another opportunity came my way. The DuPage County Sheriff's Department was looking to add municipality officers to their SWAT team. With the encouragement of my sergeants and command staff, I applied and was accepted as a member of this team by my now-friend, Commander Tom Zelinski, who's in the audience. I made assistant team leader, and then finally assistant commander on that SWAT team, as previously mentioned. I was an integral part of the training cadre that also included David Keem, Mark Asserson, Joe Bakke, and Ryan Cusack for our team. With the training I received, I paid it forward and trained the officers in multiple agencies throughout DuPage County, as well as our own department. I always brought back to our agency any training I received and passed along to our officers here at Glendale Heights. I have been training our officers to the next level throughout my entire career. This is sometimes more than officers receive at other agencies. I retired from SWAT as I was promoted to the rank of sergeant by Chief Marin, and I thanked Chief Marin. When Chief Marin retired, Doug Flint was promoted to chief and offered me yet one other opportunity. The opportunity of commanding Fiat SWAT. They were looking for a new commander and asked me if I wanted to apply. I told Chief Flint, I said, it's going to take a lot of work and a lot of time. He said the department would back me one hundred percent, and they did. While commanding Fiat SWAT, Chief Madden of Burr Ridge Police Department believed that DuPage County should consolidate all of their several task forces that were within DuPage County into one, including consolidating the two SWAT teams, Fiat and DuPage County. The new consolidation is called Merritt. I tested and became the first SWAT commander for the multi-agency task force, combining and merging both Fiat and DuPage County SWAT to work as one unit now known as Metro SWAT. Thank you, Chief Flint. I then again retired from SWAT as Chief Pappas promoted me to my current position of Deputy Chief of Police Patrol Operations. I can't thank Chief Pappas enough for giving me one last opportunity in my career. It was another challenge in my career that I needed to conquer and hope that I did not disappoint. Thank you, Chief Pappas. I mention all these people because they have supported me in my journey through my career. I thank them all from the bottom of my heart. If it were not for them, I don't know what I would have done. I thank the Village Board for supporting and trusting me in all the positions I have held. I don't know if the resume I was trying to reach was ever accomplished, but it sure was a hell of a ride. Opportunities will arise for our officers who are standing behind me. I know if they work hard and prove themselves, they could have just as much of a rewarding career as I did. I hope that I have inspired at least one of our officers, as Ron Kerstein did for me. I am honored to have worked beside these officers through these years, as we know they are currently facing challenging times now. I know with the leadership of Chief Pappas, Deputy Chief Kelly Derry, Deputy Chief Michael Penikos, and Commander Bradley Malloy, and the sergeants, they will continue to be educated and trained to handle any situation that arises. Thank you to the Police Commission for the hard work that you do. I need to thank our department support staff, including our command staff administrative assistants, our records department, our community service officers, and our part-time officers. Without these dedicated department members, this job would only be harder. I thank my family for their never-ending support during my journey in this very rewarding career. I love you all. I'd like to thank one last person. My wife, Susan. She has supported me in all of my decisions, including Metro SWAT and accepting the promotion to deputy chief. Susan wanted to retire more than a year ago, but continued to work until it was time for me to hang up my gear. Susan just retired on Monday, January thirtieth. Thank you for your support and hanging in there. I love you. I am fortunate to have made it this long in this career, as some of our officers have never had the opportunity to retire before passing. They will always be remembered. I have forged strong relationships and friendships in my career that will last forever. I have wonderful working partners here at the department, such as Mike Jageet, Wendy Toigo, Mike Penikos, Kelly Derry, Ron Kerstein, and of course, Chief George Pappas, just to name a few. I thank them all for their guidance when needed, friendship, and support. I will always be grateful for my brothers and sisters that wear blue and my brothers and sisters that wear green. Please be safe. Watch your six, your partner's six. I am DB57. I am CoolBreeze. I am TenFortyTwo. Thank you.
I have some things for David for his retirement. This plaque says, "Presented to Deputy Chief David S. Bailey. Appreciation for your twenty-seven years of dedicated service to the Glendale Heights Police Department and to the community." David also will get his retirement badge that says, "David Bailey, lease, Glendale Heights, retired." And as customary, when a member of the police department retires, they get their service weapon. So Dave will be getting his service weapon. Mayor, come on down here.
That's a nice watch. Retirement watch.
Dave has worn a lot of badges, as you guys can tell from all the things that he's done. So when officers retire, they also get shadow boxes with their badges. Dave has a sword in his box, so he has the biggest shadow box I've ever seen in my life. So Nate will do this.
All right. Well, I'll just lean it here for now. So on behalf of FOP Lodge Fifty-two Local, you're always part of our family. You never leave. We appreciate everything you've done for the community as our outreach and your support. I'll hold up the shadow box so it's more visible. He's not joking, he has a sword.
Dave's going to shake everybody's hand, and if we could, take a break, Mayor.
Could I see that weird dance that he does? I just want to see it once.
Thank you very much.
And you were our teacher, actually. He taught us, too.
We will recess this meeting for pictures and cake cutting.
Thank you.
We will resume meeting. We now go on to public comments of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board?
Yes. Ed Pope, Wayne Avenue. Could someone explain the new liquor clarifications of license amendment? What's it going to adopt? Because several weeks ago, you guys brought forward bringing hard liquor into the seven-elevens and gas stations, and thankfully, the board voted it down. Now there's a new amendment in here, but it doesn't say what it's for.
It is for the sale of Truly's, Mike's Hard Lemonade, those type of drinks. No hard liquor, no spirits of any kind, simply the mixed cocktails that they can't sell with their current license, but allows them to sell Mike's Hard Lemonade, Truly.
So like the canned junk?
Yes.
But they're not going to be selling hard liquors, like bottles of booze?
Nope. Does not allow for individual sale of any type of Jack Daniels or vodka or any whiskey, no vodka, I mean, no spirits of any kind, strictly to the sale of the pre-mixed canned or bottled drinks that are popular today.
Can they sell the pre-mixed hard liquors?
Well, like the Mike's Hard Lemonade, that, yes.
Well, no, like you can buy Jack and Coke. They sell it in a can now, like a, you know, like a can of soda?
Truly, it's mixed cocktail. There's no way of separating out, really, a Mike's Hard Lemonade from a whatever that is.
Okay. So, but no...
But not in, no individual sales of hard spirits of any kind?
Full bottles, correct.
I'm sorry, repeat it?
Full bottles.
No, no, no individual sale of...
But just the trendy stuff that's out, the Truly and all this mixed stuff that's out now, but not the hard liquors?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else from public?
Just agenda items.
Agenda items. You have the council agenda before you would. Acting Village Administrator Doug Flint, please read the council agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Three, approval of the counts payable listing of February second, two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of nine million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and seven cents. Four, motion to approve pay request number two to Jensen's Plumbing and Heating LLC for the GH2O Aquatic Center Boiler Project in total amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Five is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Pojek?
So moved.
Trustee Schroder?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Old business. The council agenda is approved. Old business. There is none. New business. One, motion to waive first reading on new business items two to five. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item two to five? Trustee Pat?
Motion to waive first reading at two and five.
Trustee Light?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item two to five is approved. Second, an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises located at three hundred and twenty-five East Army Tail Road, Unit One Zero Six, in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI Maze Lounge, from the January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, COW. First reading is waived. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero seven. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero seven? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
Sergeant.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero seven is approved.
Thank you.
Number three, an ordinance to waive bid and authorize the purchase of one twenty-twenty-three Ford F-350 regular cab pickup truck and the disposal of one nineteen ninety-seven GMC Sierra thirty-five-hundred pickup truck for the Village of Glendale Heights. First reading is waived. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Second, trustee Pat. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight is approved. Number four, an ordinance to waive bid and authorize the purchase of one twenty-twenty-three Ford F-250 pickup truck with snowplow and one twenty-twenty-three Ford F-250 pickup truck and the disposal of one Chevrolet van twenty-five-hundred HD and one two thousand nine Ford F-150 pickup truck for the Village of Glendale Heights. First reading is waived. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nine. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nine? Trustee Schroder?
So moved.
Trustee Pat?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nine is approved. Number five, an ordinance to amend section four dash three dash eleven entitled, "Classification of Licenses of Chapter Three Entitled Liquor Control," of Title Four, entitled, "Business and License Regulations of the Village Board of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Class E Dash One Liquor License." First reading is waived. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten? Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2023 dash ten? Trustee Light.
So moved.
Uh, trustee projects.
Second.
Uh, discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Public discussions, agenda items. We now go on the public discussion of, a motion to adopt ordinance 2023 dash ten is approved. We now go on the public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda items only? There is none. Okay.
Hi, my name is Ahmad Hussain. I am a resident of Arlington Heights. Uh, my question is regarding for the cricket fields.
Sir. Settle, come on back. Yeah, that's the next meeting.
It's in the next meeting?
This is not, that's not an agenda item, so it would be the next meeting.
Okay.
Which is right after this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Executive session, there is none. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Uh, trustee Light.
Motion to adjourn.
And trustee Schroder.
Second.
Second. This miss, meeting, uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Light, you have the committee of the whole.
Thank you.
You are.
Okay. I call the committee of the whole meeting for February 2nd, 2023 to order. Ms. Schmidt, will you please, um, take note with present?
Noted.
Um, before I ask anyone else, Ms. Schmidt, you had something you needed to
Yes.
read or something?
Um. I've been asked about the legal bills from the last meeting. Some were from the investigation of the allegations against me by this person next to me. Not only has he persisted in telling people he caught me taking money, but now he has the audacity and the unmitigated gall to say that I have committed voter fraud. In fact, he admitted to committing voter fraud by having a petition signed for a candidate who then swore in writing she circulated the petitions and signed it by mistake. People wanna know where their money went for the investigations. And I am going to give you part of the confidential report that relates to me and my alleged actions. Uh, the background is prior to 2008, the village clerk was a full-time paid position, and there was also a full-time deputy clerk. When Ms. Schmidt became the village clerk, the position was changed to part-time, and many of the duties were assumed by administrative staffs. For her role as village clerk, she received an annual stipend of five thousand dollars. In 2008, the village abolished the village collector position. However, on or about December 9th, 2010, the village re- recreated the position and the ordinance specifically provided that the same person holding the elective office of village clerk can hold the appointment office of village collector, and the board appointed Clerk Schmidt as the village collector. On February 10th, 2011, the village board gave tentative approval for the addition of the stipend position of village collector for FOIA data collection coordination. And on March 9th, 2011, the board approved a pro rata payment of the stipend to Clerk slash Collector Schmidt. Thereafter, Ms. Schmidt has received a stipend of five thousand dollars per year for her role as collector, and her duties as collector included FOIA responses and, excuse me, signing survey plaits. She was never given any responsibilities for obtaining monies owed to the village. On February 9th, 2022, President Coker sent a certified letter to Ms. Schmidt asking her to meet with him and threatening otherwise, quote, "I will have no choice but to commence legal proceedings against you," unquote. She refused, and since then, President Coker has made public comments to the effect that Clerk Collector Schmidt was stealing money from the village regarding her receipt of the collector stipends. As applicable here, Illinois law defines theft as knowingly obtaining or exerting unauthorized control over the property of the owner or obtains by deception control over property of the owner with the intent to permanently deprive the owner of the use or benefit of the property. Theft in excess of ten thousand dollars and less than one hundred thousand dollars from a government entity is a class one felony. As a criminal action, theft would be, have to be proven beyond a reasonable doubt. In Illinois, the role of a village collector is incredibly misunderstood. We have not found anything in the village's ordinances that identifies all of the duties and responsib- responsibilities of a village collector. Moreover, President Coker said that he was not aware of any such details, nor was he aware of the duties and responsibilities of collectors in other municipalities. In the Village of Glendale Heights, since becoming village collector in 2011, Ms. Schmidt's duties as collector, collector have never been limited. And there's no evidence whatsoever that she was ever asked, tasked with any responsibilities for seeking out and recovering or collecting unpaid monies owed to the village. Instead, her duties as collector have largely focused on reviewing and signing survey plaits as part of development projects within the village. It must also be noted that Ms. Schmidt has extensive duties as village clerk. Indeed, President Coker told me, that would be the attorney, that Ms. Schmidt spends about as much time working in the, for the village as he does. Yet, while President Coker receives extra compensation for meetings he undertakes on behalf of the village, there is no such additional compensation for the village clerk. Indeed, based upon the amount of hours Ms. Schmidt, Ms. Schmidt, sorry, works for the village, the village clerk stipend of five thousand dollars would equate to less than five dollars an hour for her time. Here it is evident that President Coker did not understand the role of village collector within the Village of Glendale Heights. There is no basis for claim of official misconduct against Clerk Collector Schmidt because there's no evidence of a mandatory duty that she has failed to perform. Although President Coker's lack of knowledge about the role was understandable, his assumption about the role did not support his accusations of criminal conduct, especially where his accusations against Clerk Collector Schmidt could have equated to a class one felony, the penalty for which could lead to fifteen years in prison. Moreover, because he had already made inflammatory threatening and potentially defamatory statements to and about Clerk Collector Schmidt, she was unwilling to meet with President Coker to attempt to provide him with the information. As a result, the relationship between President Coker and Clerk Collector Schmidt has become at the very least strained, and because other for village officials were offended by President Coker's rhetoric about Clerk Collector Schmidt, President Coker's relationships with other village officials became further strained as well. The bottom line is that President Coker's accusations regarding Clerk Collector Schmidt's receipt of annual stipends as collector are entirely unfounded. Her receipt of the stipends was not unauthorized, nor is there any suggestion that she has knowingly, knowingly received or retained monies to which she has not been entitled. Ultimately, if the village is not satisfied that Clerk Collector Schmidt is performing all of the duties required of her, it is incumbent upon the village to specify exactly what duties she is expected to perform and then measure her performance based upon those explicit, explicit expectations. In short, there is no basis for concluding that Clerk Collector Schmidt has not been performing the tasks expected of her in exchange for receiving the collector stipends. We have the proof that he is untruthful. So I ask that the board take whatever action is necessary to curtail his outrageous behavior. And I am giving fair warning that with the continuation of allegations against me, I will tell the truth, and that includes everything that is in this report because my reputation has been sullied in this village. And this is not something I deserve, having been a volunteer in one capacity or another since 1977 without any kind of incident. And these are not allegations that are made to me. They are made behind my back that tells you something about the character of the people because he has cohorts in this who are making them. Thank you.
Can I answer, Mr. Light?
Let's just throw under, let's do whatever, um.
I have very good answer for.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay, number one, I have not, I have not told to independent counsel uh, that she is spending as many hours as I am spending. I'm spending about seventy to hundred hours per week. Still, I am spending those, you know. If somebody wants proof, I can give, he or she can come to my office, talk with my secretary or me. I am going to volunteer how many hours I spend, you know, it's not joke. It's not joke. Okay, number second, she said that board gave, you know, I know board gave her five thousand dollar, but board did not give any responsibility for what she's getting for five thousand dollar. The poor these, this village, Village of Glendale Heights, these are mediocre people. These are not rich people. I belong to the same family. I am here to protect their money, to protect their dignity, to protect their respect, you know. Those people, they told me, Mayor, you are the person now we have earned some respect. When we go to village, we get some respect. They were not respected over here. And number three, she mentioned about five thousand dollar for signature, you know. I'm getting, Mayor is getting fifteen hundred dollar for signing liquor stores, you know. I am liquor commissioner. I'm getting fifteen hundred dollar. And Clerk is getting five thousand dollar. That is example of cronyism. What happened in 2011, in that ordinance, two seats were created, one for Clerk, Clerk, Collector, five thousand. Clerk is getting two paycheck, five thousand dollar for Clerk, five thousand dollar for Collector. She is not doing job, you know. No responsibility was given by the board to Collector. So question is, why she's getting Clerk, Collector, you know, five thousand dollar for no jobs, you know, no nothing. She's saying stealing this and that, that is, that is story, you know, making, you know, big speech. That is money is taken away with the knowledge, with the approval of board, and money is going to one collector, you know, without any job description. That is not honest and fair, you know. That is taking village money, you know. I am on the board, there, I am here to protect the village, to protect the resident. I'm not here for one person. I'm not here to protect, you know, trustee or their cronyism, you know, their friends, you know. I'm not here for. I won this by two vote, and one vote is a lot to win the election. And people like that, you know. And second position was created for the former mayor, her daughter Linda, Jackson's daughter, you know, Tracy. She is high school, I believe, what I believe, the position was eliminated.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mike, Mike, you're the chairman.
Yes, that cannot be discussed. It's a.
No, no employees.
No employee.
Discussions.
We can't talk about that stuff, all right?
Oh, Mike, I will not name, but the thing is, the position was created for a friend, for a mayor's daughter, and high school and position was, what was eliminated? Deputy director position. And new name was assistant.
You can't talk about that.
Assistant to director, clerical position. And she's getting ninety-eight thousand dollar.
Okay.
That is residents' money.
All right, we're done.
Thank you.
All right, we're going on to, does anyone have any additions or deletions?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Mohammed. Oh, sorry, trustee Pojak. Uh, stipends and insurance.
And.
Separate or one?
Two separate. Insurance, okay, anyone else? Mohammed.
Uh, department heads, um, contract renewal. Two different things? No, it's the one thing. Okay.
Hmm. Hmm, okay. And I'm just, I have one to add, and that was just entertainment and not the meeting, okay? Okay.
Entertainment.
Yes, entertainment.
Board meeting?
What was that, Mike?
Entertainment, okay. All right. So we're, we're, no one else? We're good? No deletions? Okay. All right, let's go on to public comment. Um, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board?
We got a couple.
We got a couple? Oh, come on up, state your name, Ed Pope Wayne Avenue.
Thank you, Michael. You are the entertainment.
Thank you.
I really don't wanna do this, but I really have to, so. I have a question about the agenda item, but before that, I just wanna say one thing. I was on the board when Marie got that stipend. It was given in good faith, all right? We took a full-time position, and she took it over all of that work as a part-time position. And the five dollars an hour that the attorney said you make is about three dollars an hour, too generous. You make about two bucks an hour. So the amount of money that you're wasting on this investigation over five thousand dollars that I in my heart believe she is more than entitled to is ridiculous. So please wrap it up and stop disparaging someone that's doing a very good job. And again, nothing inappropriate was done. There was no nepotism, no cronyism. We took a full-time job. We took a full-time job away, saved the village eighty thousand dollars and gave Marie a little perk, a little, for doing more work. And again, I don't believe it's five dollars an hour, Marie. I think it's about two bucks if it's that, so. That's my comment that I had to get off my chest. Now, my question is, on the RFP, which still isn't out, is it Keith?
No.
Can it be put out in time for the cricket season this year? Is there enough time to get it? Doesn't it start, I mean, I know there's cricket guys here, but those guys are out there first thing in the spring and we don't have a contract. And we're fighting over who's going to get the contract. In the meantime, there is no contract. And the, the season's going to start. It's February second. I mean, spring's right around the corner. Is there enough time to pull this off? And I'm not trying to start political stuff here. I'm telling, my honest question is, is there enough time for them to make, hopefully, a generous offer to the village so that they can make money and that we can have the cricket teams back?
There is enough time built into the timeline that they can be up and playing May one.
I think that's probably about right then. I didn't think it could get done that fast.
Well, that's the goal.
So depending on what happens here tonight.
That's the goal.
All right, thank you.
Michael Antiveros, Glendale Heights. Before I, my allotted time of five minutes begin, again, I would ask the village board to allow me to speak freely without intervention and then have you, Chadri Kokar, respond to the questions thereafter. In our last board meeting, we discussed Chadri Kokar's stipends. Speaking of, it was perfect timing. Specifically, he was paid over seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars from June first of twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. I just received Chadri Kokar's latest stipends for twenty twenty-two. There were over one hundred and forty-seven entries for a total of seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. September and October alone were a doozy, having billed the taxpayers nine hundred and nine hundred and fifty dollars respectively. In reading some of Chadri Kokar's billables at the rate of fifty dollars per instance, he billed the taxpayers of Glendale Heights four, honoring six Glenbard Heights students from Glendale Heights, seven interviews for executive secretary positions, walks at Camera Park, even a community bike ride. And then this one, assuring safe and fair elections. He charged fifty dollars to the taxpayers of Glendale Heights. You must have slept through that meeting, I'm sure. Then the final was meetings, not meeting. At least five with the attorney to discuss legal updates. And just so that I'm clear on what I'm reading here, if you can answer this, Mr. Kokar, the taxpayers of Glendale Heights are footing the bill for your legal woes and then in turn, you're charging us right back for your time. Please explain yourself at the conclusion of my presentation with respect to that comment. And then speaking of legal woes, we spoke of the investigative report against you and what it's costing the taxpayers of Glendale Heights. To date that total, Siddiqui, thank you for giving me the information. The last meeting was over forty-two thousand dollars and it's still ongoing. There is no end in sight. Now, there's two lawsuits filed against you, Mr. Kokar. One for defamation of character and the other for race discrimination. I'm not an attorney and neither are you. I know we both watch Perry Mason and people know that I love Columbo, but that still doesn't make me the smartest guy in the world. However, I have good instincts and I think I know where this is going. I know that we have insurance coverage through travelers for the village of Glendale Heights. In that policy, we have a deductible that has to be paid before they start paying your legal bills. Tell me, Mr. Kokar, what is the deductible amount and how much the bill is paid to travelers to date for your legal expenses? And again, answer that at the end of my presentation. I'd also like to know, whether it be you or the village board on this question, what was the premium that we were paying on that policy before the investigations and lawsuits? And what is the new amount thereafter? Like everyone else in this room, when you file a claim or claims, your insurance premium goes up. The electoral meetings that were just happening, then still there's one ongoing. There were four meetings that took place and one, we still have to go regarding the upcoming elections on April fourth for village trustees. The electoral board is supposed to be unbiased in their opinions and decisions as to whom should be or not be on the ballot. In this instance, you were clearly biased and handpicked three candidates personally. You even distributed a petition on one of the candidate's behalf only to have it disqualified in the proceedings. Once again, you represented yourself as an attorney and challenged a legitimate attorney that specializes in electoral law. You were rude, not only to the electoral attorney, but to the residents of Glendale Heights at that meeting. You had the audacity to have one of our residents removed from the proceedings because they did not agree with your comments. You should have recused yourself from those meetings, but you refused to do the right thing. So please tell me and the taxpayers, what did it cost us to run the election hearings? And what did we pay for the attorney representing the village of Glendale Heights Electoral Board? The floor is now open to you, Mr. Kokar.
Can I respond?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Mike Antiveros.
Yes, sir.
You filed lawsuit against clerk of DuPage County.
We had that discussion in the last meeting and it has no relevance here whatsoever.
Do you have clean hand, you know? You are wasting taxpayers' money with the DuPage County. Right or wrong?
I don't see, again, what's all this, sir?
You have filed frivolous lawsuit against.
Excuse me, Mr. Kokar, don't raise your voice to me.
Listen, no, no, listen. It's not your turn, now, I, mine, you know. You listen now. I listen to you five minute. You listen me, you know.
I'll give you five minutes.
No, no, you, you have no right to give me five minute. You have no right to give me five minute, but you, you do not have clean hand. You are wasting your money. And now you are talking about village money. You are wasting DuPage County money, that is tax money. Are you wasting or not? Give me how much money you spend, your money, for this lawsuit, you know. And you know it's a frivolous lawsuit, you know. Same, Mr. Bari, he filed frivolous lawsuit that has been dismissed, you know.
You do know there is an appeal.
This is, this is, I know, he's, he's.
Well, then you're missed.
Other action has been dismissed, you know. He said, no. He doesn't know, you know. I know that has been dismissed, you know. His wife, she has some, but that will be dismissed. There has no ground, you know. I do not have license, but I do have license from my country, Pakistan.
This isn't Pakistan.
Listen, I can appear pro se, that is my constitutional right, and I do all the time. I won this election in the court. I was removed by the circuit court judge. And then I filed appeal by myself. I did not hire attorney. And you said this guy is dummy, stupid, you know. He's not stupid person. He won this election. I went to court, up to LNI Supreme Court. And in case I have to go again, I will go, you know. I know how to fight for my legal rights, you know. I don't need attorney for that.
Can I ask you where in any of my presentation?
No, no, it's not question answer.
You didn't, you're not answering one question in my presentation.
It's my time.
Well, answer the questions.
No, no, it's not your time. It's my time. Give me honest question, answer. How much money you have spent from your pocket on this lawsuit?
Again, I'll answer the question.
You're not answering.
I imagine.
Because you know.
This is my money, not taxpayer money. Has no relevance here whatsoever. We went through this before. So please answer the questions that are posed to you. You won't answer one question?
No, no, you have no answer, no questioning.
I have no questions.
You have no valid question, you know.
Okay, well, then I'll open it to the board so maybe they can understand me and what I had to say because obviously, he's not going to answer any of the questions.
Mohammed, go ahead.
Mr. Antiveros, so back to your question about the traveler insurance which you asked. So I have some details for you because you are a taxpayer and you have all the rights. And I was hoping that Mr. Coker should give you.
Mr. Siddiqui, don't mention my name. No, don't mention my name. Listen.
He's speaking.
Chairman, you cannot mention my name.
So he could do it, but, you know, he is not. So I'm gonna give it to you because this is your right. This is your money which we are spending. So with the date of August twelve, twenty twenty-two, invoice number six one four three four seven, seven hundred and fifty-five dollar and ten cents. September fourteen, twenty twenty-two, invoice number six one five six two seven, two thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollar and ninety cents. October twelve, twenty twenty-two, invoice number six one six eight nine seven, one thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollar and thirty-one cents. Sept, uh, ele, um, of, November sixteen, twenty twenty-two, six one eight two one five invoice number, seventy-two dollar and fifty cents. And January seventeen, twenty twenty-three, six two oh nine nine four invoice number, six thousand one hundred fifty-one dollar and thirty-three cents. If you sum up all those up till January, we paid eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollar and fourteen cents to the travelers insurance and they have a deductible of twenty-five thousand dollars. So they will be keep, you know, charging us until they reach to there. And I don't have an answer for that, how much we were paying before, but I think we will be paying more because obviously, you know, in any insurance, if you paid more. So that total, the one which I gave you before, forty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollar and thirty-five cents. And if you add these and the stipend, the total is like around sixty thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollar and fourteen cents. That's what this city has been paid for all this nonsense. I would say this is the nonsense. These are your money. That's how we are spending this because, you know, unfortunately, we have to, like Ms. Schmidt was telling us, we have been, this is for five thousand dollar. And Ms. Schmidt, who has been serving here since nineteen seventy-seven, and we did a investigation, which exonerated her, which said that she did not do any wrongdoing. But still, we are, up till this date, we are talking about this. I have no clue what, what we are really doing. Because we spent sixty thousand dollar, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollar, and we are still talking about the five thousand dollar stealing, stealing. I am fed up with all this. So this is your answer. This is what we, you know, this village is doing.
Okay. Anybody else want to answer any of the other questions that I had asked about?
Well, I do know the insurance. I'm sure that our liability portion of it, it's deductible is twenty-five thousand dollars. That's what we're liable for. We have to pay. As far as the increase for the policy, I imagine it's an upwards of fifty percent increase on the policy due to our claims that we've had so far. So it's definitely going upwards. There is no doubt about that. The hearing costs, I have no idea because apparently they're not over with as of yet. So those costs that were brought on by the, the election part of it were, they're still happening, whatever it is. It's going to be continuing for at least one more meeting that I know of.
Okay, and then I got one last one regarding the stipends and anybody can answer. Who oversees the stipends and approves the stipends? Does the board get a chance to review the stipends before they're submitted and approved? Or is this just something we just write a blank check for?
No, there's a, there's a process that is gone through and they are vetted and looked at. I do know that for a fact. As far as how many get approved or not approved, I couldn't answer that because I don't do that vetting process itself, so.
I can answer for you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
So this has been a ongoing issue for a number of years. Prior to, I don't know when, six months ago, the, there was no real approvals of the stipend sheets turned in by elected officials. So they put their stipend request in and then it went through finance and it got paid. About six months ago, we instituted a, a new procedure and we had a committee formed and we went through all of the prior lists of approved meetings that would be paid as stipend and those meetings that would be, that are considered part of your compensation as an elected official. There was a six or seven-page list that's been in effect for decades that the elected officials went by. We had a committee, we, Chief Pappas and I and trustee Pojak and Schroder went through the list and came out with what is an agreed-upon list from all the elected officials on what they get paid as a stipend and what is part of their annual compensation. That form now goes to the village administrator's office, who reviews it. And as long as it meets one of the criteria for the approved meetings that, that the board and the committee has approved, it gets paid as a stipend.
Thank you for the answer. Appreciate that. Finally, I'm getting some clarity. Okay, well, I've gotten about ninety percent of my, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Mr. Antiveros, I may say one thing. Regarding Mr. Coker, you will never, ever get a straight answer from that man. Believe me, we've tried so many times since he's been elected. It, it, it. There's nothing upstairs over here.
Let me answer.
Part of the night, the drawer is empty.
Chairman, let me, let me answer. Quick answer.
I got, I have a couple of questions. On the stipends, seven thousand dollars. I mean, what? I mean, I just found this out, seven thousand dollars. I mean, what is, what is seven thousand dollars? I mean, is this for a, a month or? I mean, you know how many people you have to talk to to get, get the seven thousand dollars?
Hundred and forty-seven.
Seven thousand five hundred and fifty.
And I, I mean, I, I, I don't understand it because I don't collect it. I said that many times. I don't take it. But if, if I'm sitting here and a resident calls me on the phone and says, I want to talk to you, can, can you speak to me, come by my house? I go by her house. I'm charging her twenty-five dollars for her to talk to me, which she's paying me. Actually, in, in money-wise, she's paying me. She's a taxpayer. She's paying me twenty-five dollars to listen to her concern, which I think is, I, is totally crazy. The whole stipend thing is, is nuts. I wanted to do away with this thing a long time ago, but, of course, I don't have the votes. But, I mean, I, I'm charging, people are paying me to, to talk to them. Who am I, who am I supposed to be that you're paying me? It's, it's crazy. It's absolutely nuts.
I agree with you on that, Pat. I would sooner remove the whole policy altogether, though, all of it. You know, give it to Daniel and be done with it, done finished.
Mike, I wasn't finished yet.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Pojak.
Speaking of stipends, Mr. Coker, on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, last year, you charged fifty dollars for a business license for Perita Insurance, right on Bloomingdale Road next to John's Donuts. You charged fifty dollars. Since when do you have the authority to issue a business license? That should go to Comdev. I checked with Mr. Mike this afternoon. That's his job, his department to do that, not you. Yet you charge fifty dollars. You, you, you get an annual wage. I'm not going to mention the amount. You get an annual. Lot of that work that other mayors do automatically.
Give him the piece of paper you have, you know, for Linda Jackson. She charged eighty-three thousand four hundred.
Can you answer me? Would you, Mr. Coker, can you answer me?
If you talk with, you open your both eyes, you know. You work with one eye. All these elected officials, eleven, we have eight people elected. All these, uh, sorry, we have eight elected people. Seven are on the one side and Chadri Kokar is on the one side. It's shame on you, all those people. You people make, you're, you come to my office, you charge twenty-five dollar. I have not charged anytime.
When did I charge twenty-five dollars?
It's on the record, you know. It's on the record. You charge twenty-five dollar, you come to my office, now I stop you. You have, you cannot come to my office. I stop you.
Show me, show me that.
I have, you know, I have those paper.
Okay.
I have those paper.
Mike.
All right, guys.
You are shaking, you know.
All right, guys, we lost track of where we were at.
You charge for coming to my office and having cup of coffee and twenty-five dollar. What, for what?
Yeah, you got me ticked off.
Yes, you.
I wish my lips and a coffee went all over.
Don't do this. It's intimidation, you know. Don't do this.
Guys, hey.
Seven on one side and buddies of Linda Jackson and Mr. Bari, they are all on the, on the other side because they're making money from this village.
Excuse me.
Coker is against that.
Excuse me.
I am here to stop that, you know. I will stop that, you know.
We're done. Thank you.
Eighty-three thousand dollar Linda Jackson bill. This is stipend. Nobody talking, you know, not these seven people.
Okay, okay, we're done. All right. Now, last comment I.
Ballot of Bari, here. One sister was married with Bari, one with this guy. He is preserving his right for ground.
All right, listen.
Nobody talks, you know, not these seven people talking about what's happening.
Come on.
Because he's paying their campaign contribution.
Listen, the last thing I want to say about this, and I really want to put it to bed right now, is if we can, can we make a policy that would take stipends and make them, you have to turn them in every single month, otherwise you will not be paid for those stipends, no matter how small they are.
When it's my turn regarding stipends.
Okay, you're not done? Okay, all right. One more.
I can go.
One more, please. All right.
All right. I'm turning this over to all the trustees.
We, we're, so with Mike. All right, well, I'm, I'm listening, uh, I'm getting a better hearing this way. Uh, but, uh, again, I'm just trying to focus on what was on my presentation. And it's going south, and I get that. It happens from time to time. But I want to be very specific about what I was asking for, and I'm not getting really all of the answers. Mr. Kokar refuses to answer them, that's his right. Um, but it's on record that he refuses to answer as such. Thank you for the board for at least giving me additional information that otherwise we wouldn't have for the village and the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, is there anyone else in the, wait, just. Come back to stipends, because you have, still on your, your list of things. Okay. Is there any other, um, Jesus, people that want to make a comment?
There's a gentleman approach.
Please, come on up.
Hello, guys. My name is Ahmad Hossan. I'm a resident of Arlington Heights, and I'm a resident of Glendale Heights. I'm here, uh, to talk about cricket field with just three simple questions. When will the application will be out to apply for, you know, the fields? Uh, we are just here for an equal opportunity, uh, nothing personal or nothing to gain about. We, it was brought to our attention that the field will be open for public to apply. We just want to know what will be the criteria of applying for the fields, when we can apply for it and when the permit will be issued. Um, as, uh, you guys mentioned that the, uh, you know, season starts, uh, from first May. Some people start from, uh, you know, last week of April. Currently, we are hoping to target, uh, the Saturday and Sunday, which will be twenty ninth April. So anything in that regard will definitely help us to plan our, uh, season better. Because, uh, once we get the field, we need to update the teams, we need to update the format, we need to update the, uh, the umpires, the coaches, the management, that how we are gonna proceed about, uh, twenty twenty-three season. So anything in that regard will, uh, highly appreciated and will definitely, uh, have us or the other party who was renting it, uh, previously, will have a better view how to approach twenty twenty-three season. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Okay.
So, Hailbary, Glendale Heights. Chaudri Koker mentioned my name and mentioned Trustee Siddiqui. And when Trustee Siddiqui mentioned his name, he go crazy. That's not fair. Now, he's about all the resident and the village of Glendale Heights, Mr. Chaudri. That's best thing happened in village of Glendale Heights. July twenty twenty-one, he had his sidewalk done. And coincidentally, next door neighbor, he also a brown Muslim person, his sidewalk got done. Few days later, another, on the south side of his street, Muslim brown guy got his job done for the sidewalk. I'm just wondering what a coincidence that he's getting all these people jobs done. Last meeting, Rebecca was complaining about that she got restricted in her office that now she cannot pass, uh, the borderline, which he, which he is draw. And then he says, um, I did not fire her. Uh, she got incentive, she got retirement. Uh, so what was the reason?
Don't discuss personal matter, you know. Excuse me.
I'm, I'm a paid, I'm paid.
He's talking about personal stuff, you know.
Nothing to do with employee wise.
Yeah.
No, you cannot just, you know, keep.
Mike, I'm just coming to the point.
Right. But you cannot discuss, you know, personal matter.
But you said it, I'm, I'm repeating.
You are not responsible for that. Listen.
Your words.
If you don't stop.
I'm repeating your words.
Listen.
What you gonna do?
No, no.
What you gonna do?
He's speaking right now.
Okay, just two more, two more minutes.
All right, with no names, please, you can refer to some, just as a.
Okay. So what happened after that? He hired his Asian Muslim lady as a secretary. And she also from.
This is again same.
Okay.
I'm not calling any name.
No, no names, but go ahead.
And that's in the report. He removed the HR person and sit in the committee to pick that person.
Again, same thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Light.
Now, another secretary comes here.
We're gonna go ahead and.
Yeah, I'm coming to the, I'm coming, I'm coming to the end. Listen to me, I'm coming to the end.
He's angry person.
If, if.
He's greedy person.
If we can just, like, wrap this.
His relative is here, he's supporting him, he's supporting him.
Shame on you.
Can we just wrap this?
All right, Mike, Mike, Mike.
Mike, can you discipline this guy? This is ridiculous.
Hit you him, can we stop this nonsense and let's move on?
All right, we're done, we're gonna move along with this, guys.
I, I got, well, just one, just one minute, okay?
Let the resident.
Why you are talking?
No, this person stops.
Why you are talking?
So, hey.
Yes. I'm coming to the.
Because he's your relative.
All right, guys.
Okay.
Mike, we lost control of everything here. All right.
Don't talk, don't talk about any employees or any, any village.
I'm not talking, I'm coming to the point, that's what, that's.
He is idiot person. He has been taking contact for twenty-one year, paying minimum fee. And his relative never open his mouth. That is village money.
All right, all right, we're done with public comment, guys.
That is village money.
We're gonna move on.
Mike, that's not fair.
This year, last year, you have to pay thirty thousand instead of twelve thousand.
Shame on you. He was coming on the Facebook page and saying that he hired a Muslim lady and she got, she was.
What she got, you know?
Yeah. You, you said that Muslim lady, you hire a Muslim lady right here.
Anyone has equal rights, you know.
Muslim, non-Muslim, Christian, animal. And like the Christian lady, he cannot say how to fire he, this is a lady.
We're gonna move on.
We're moving on.
We're gonna move on with committee recommendation.
You have no merit.
I think he has somebody else.
Oh, okay, please, be nice.
I, I was just, uh, I was just listening to all the comments. I'm, I'm gonna be very quick and very short.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Kasim. Um, I'm not gonna say where I am a resident, I'm an American. And I'm just gonna stick to that because, you know, I served in the military, I, I'm a seventy percent disabled veteran and I have been overseas. And I shed blood for this country, but all of this nonsense is just ridiculous. This is my first time here and this is just absolutely ridiculous to, uh, listen to. Anyways, the reason I'm here today, um, is because I am a, I'm a cricket fan. I'm a lo, I'm a lover of cricket and I've been playing cricket for, uh, since I was born. And I'm a proud American and I'm a proud Muslim, uh, American. And I just wanna say, uh, whatever the board decides, I don't care. I'm not, I'm, I don't care who the board is gonna give it to, whether it's Sohail Bari. He has done a tremendous job. He has done a tremendous job for the past twenty years, uh, keeping the fields. Uh, but I think as an American, because the last time I heard it was that, hey, only the village residents should be given the opportunity, I think that is not fair. And the reason is because I am an American. America is for everyone, not, not a single one of you is, is an American unless you came from somewhere. So therefore, it should not be limited to any single person who's living in that particular community or who's, who's living in that particular area. And it should, it should be open to anyone. I don't care who you guys give it to. I just wanna make sure I have a field to play and we have everything, all the details are out so that whoever gets it has the ability to provide us the cricket that we deserve. That's all.
Can you, uh, tell me your name? Can you spell your name for me, please?
Yes, my name is Kasim, Kasim Mehdi, Q A S I M, Quebec Alpha Sierra Ilia Mike. Last name is Mehdi, Mike Echo Hotel Delta, India.
And where do you live?
I live in Schaumburg.
Schaumburg, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Kasim. Thank you for your service.
You like a Valentine?
Go on.
Okay, okay, more.
Good evening. My voice is a little low, so I don't know if you are, I have to scream to talk to you guys. I'm Glendale Heights resident for the last forty-three years. And I just want to know, what is RFP? Who's, are the member of this RFP committee? Are they all trustees or is anybody be outsider also?
None of that has been decided yet.
Huh? It's all inside?
None of that has been decided.
They're all outsider?
Nothing has been decided.
Oh, no, nothing will decide.
There's no decisions on anything yet.
You know, I consider, in my opinion, I'm the most eligible guy to, uh, be, give you some advice. Because I've been doing this all over United States, even outside the, uh, United States. I was a member of the International Cricket Council Committee. And I have organized matches, Australia, India matches in Florida, oh, sorry, Los Angeles. Pakistan women's, uh, team and US woman team in, in, uh, Florida. And, and there's another tournament in, 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 in Philadelphia. So I just want you guys, if you consider me in that committee, it will be very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, what is your name? Can you spell it for me?
Okay, my name is Akhtar, A K, H as in Harry.
A K.
He step to the microphone, please. Oh, sorry. A K, H as in Harry, T as in Thomas, A R. Last name is Syed, S Y E D as in David. I live on Glendale Heights, one six eight nine Glendale.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have one more.
Anyone else?
Hi, guys. My name is Mohammed Khan and I'm the president for the Castle Cricket League. Uh, the, the only reason I'm here for, when I heard, because there's a bidding situation is going on for the cricket field, I just like to say one thing. I have twelve ground in the Illinois area right now. The only reason why I'm here is because it's been giving to the one person the ground, you know, all so many years that I have no problem with that. I mean, but the only thing is like other areas like, uh, Hanover Park, uh, Hoffman Estate, uh, Des Plaine and Plainfield, Naperville, they all divided to the other people too, other league also. So why can't you guys do, instead of just giving to the one person, split it with the different leagues? So I'm not saying don't give it to the Sohail or don't give it to me or any, any other league. Whoever is applying it, it's only like three leagues are applying, I believe that's what I, my understanding is. So there are three grounds for the Glendale Heights. So why not just split it just like other, you know, division are doing it, like, uh, Hanover Park? You guys, I don't have to tell you guys, like, you can call them and find out, like, they are not giving to the one person, they are giving to everybody. So why don't you guys do that? There is no fighting, there is nothing too personal to anybody. That's just, my understanding is just a fair deal for everybody. Because not all the Glendale Heights, you saying the resident of Glendale Heights, I mean, we are applying through the residents of Glendale Heights because my three directors live in Glendale Heights right now. The only thing is why, I mean, you know, just do that way, this is the simple and easy way for, you know, no discrimination for anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Obad, and I'm the resident of Glendale Heights on Seventy-One West, Glendale Avenue. And I just have one open question. I'm not from any other side, I'm just the resident of Glendale Heights. That you guys are like giving the cricket, cricket field. Why does not the village own it? Anybody want it, they come to the village, apply for it and then take it. Who are pay the mood, they can have it. The village can open a seasonal position and have a gun guy looking at that and then they can have been open to everybody, every single one, not to one person, not to two person, not to three person. They will be like somewhat late. If I want to organize a tournament, I can come to the village and tell I have this much matches and then I want it for this day. So if there is nobody in there, the village can earn the money directly. So if I want the ground and you guys say, oh, go to these three people, so why I have to go? I am a resident, so I'm applying to the village. I will come up because that's a village property. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Village was hijacked by these people, you know, there's a reason.
Okay, okay, okay. Guys, guys, all right. We're gonna go on, um, committee recommendations. Uh, there are none of those. Um, let's go on to discussion regarding a very popular topic here. Uh, a motion to reconsider the request for proposal, RFP, for cricket fields. Is there a motion to reconsider the request for proposal for, uh, RFP for cricket fields? Mr. Meritato.
I make a motion to, uh, take it off the table and discuss.
Okay. Second?
Second.
So, thank you.
No discussion.
No discussion? Oh, do we have discussion on it? No. All right, roll call, vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
All right. Uh, motion reconsider, request proposal is passed, um.
Those off the table, so it's up for discussion.
So we're off the table, we're up for discussion. Mr. Meritato.
I'd like to make, make a motion to, uh, put this off for RFP.
And we have a second.
You second?
Second. Mr. Coker. Okay.
You could have discussion.
Discussion? Mr. Schmidt?
Uh, do we have a date that we want the RFP returned by?
Uh, Doug, is that?
Darcy's got those dates.
Darcy?
Yeah, let me give you a little bit of the timeline. The RFP release date would be February seventh, so this would happen fairly quickly. I would advertise it on Friday and the bid would be distributed to the plan holders on Tuesday, February seventh. They have until February twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-three at four P M. to ask any questions and receive clarifications on any part of that RFP. And an RFP does stand for request for proposal. Proposals are due March seventh at eleven A M. And we will request village board approval April sixth. This would allow time for evaluation and any possible interviews if so required.
What's the for the April?
Excuse me?
You mentioned.
Village Board Approval, we're targeting the April sixth meeting.
April sixth, six?
Mm-hmm, April sixth.
Okay.
With a contract start date of May first. And one other thing, it was formatted, uh, to be awarded to either a single awardee or multiple awardees, so I know that question was brought up.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Light. Uh, you know, what I want, that each and every resident or non-resident of Glendale Heights should have equal and fair opportunity to this RFP, you know. That's it. I don't want for any person, I don't want to deprive anybody. I want fair and equal opportunity for my resident as well as non-resident. Because it's unconstitutional, if we just say, you know, we will give to, uh, Glendale Heights resident, you know.
Okay, Mr. Meritato.
I want to put the RFP out for anybody that wants to apply for the fields. So I, I don't see what the problem, I don't see what the problem is. It's for anybody that wants to apply for the field, can, can fill out the RFP, send it in, and then we'll take it from there.
All right, anyone else?
So when it will be available for the board to review? Is it on April sixth? It's going to be, uh, reviewed by us, uh, like, once the proposal comes in, correct?
Well, the proposal evaluation com- committee is still to be determined and I, I don't know that it could be the whole board. Well, the proposal evaluation committee is still to be determined, and I don't know that it could be the whole board.
Yeah, because we want two members of our board to be.
No, 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 wait, wait, wait.
We're just gonna get this out.
Wait a minute, let's not get out of hand here.
Yep.
I only made a proposal to put this out for RFP.
Correct, that's all we're working on.
So what's gonna happen?
No committees, no anything. I just put it out for RFP. Now, we do okay it, or we don't okay it?
So this will work through the normal procedure, where staff will evaluate, and they'll make a recommendation to the full board for approval? And then the board can discuss.
The board can, at any point.
Correct.
Come back and say, hey, we want a committee of some sort.
Correct.
Right now, we're just, we, we.
We're just putting the RFP out.
We need to get the RFP out so that cricket can start the end of April, first part of May, and we can have control of fields and control of leagues. And the respondents, if they respond, have the opportunity to get their schedules together and get their players together and get their, their umpires together, get all their equipment they need. They need that opportunity to do that. So we need to get this out today. We can have that conversation about committees and everything else at some other time.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, okay. So, any other discussion on this? I'm gonna put this thing to bed. All right, um. Roll call, vote.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
So this will go out? We don't need to carry this any further to the board, this just goes out now? All right, this final action? Great, how about it? All right, now we're going on to other. Let's see who was first on the list, and that was, um, Chester. Stipends and insurance.
The first thing I have is stipends.
Correct.
I'm gonna write, uh, read this, this is for all the board. All stipends must be turned in within three days on every, after every month. If it's not turned in, it will not be paid. Also, stipends will be reviewed by all six trustees. We all want a copy of every one stipend, so we can review it.
Is this new language you're asking for?
Yes, so we can review this for the next board meeting. Let these guys think about this.
Is this for the current one as well?
If.
For this year?
No, this has to be discussed further.
Or?
This is.
What was the first, what was the first one? Three days after the end of the month?
Three days, yes. And if it's not, uh, turned in, they will not be paid. And I want every trustee to have a copy of their stipends for all of us, so we can review it and discuss it. And also with the executive staff, we got a couple guys over there sitting there that.
Why?
All right.
Mike?
Pat, sorry.
Why, why can't Chester, why can't we do at the end of thirty days? They have to, it has to be anybody by the end of the month.
By the third day, three days, you got three days.
Three days after.
After the end of the month.
Yeah.
Right. I like that idea, gives you a little time to fill it out.
Right.
Got to, okay.
You have to specify business days. You want it business days.
Okay, so February twenty-eighth, you got three days after that, so do you mind?
Three business days.
Three business days, yeah.
Okay.
You should specify that.
Okay.
Well, I don't have a calendar here in front of me.
All right. Anyone else? Chester, go ahead, you still got one more.
Yeah, the other thing here is, I brought this up before, on September fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, Mr. Coker, you charged fifty dollars for a business license for Perita Insurance. Did you go over there and talk to this gentleman?
I don't know, you know, my secretary, she's, uh.
Well, you should know, you were there.
And, uh.
Why, she wasn't there, you were there.
Yeah, if I was there, then I charge you.
Well, answer me, don't.
I don't know, I don't have anything in front of me, you know. It's not if you.
You don't know who this guy is?
Listen, I don't know, I go, I attend a lot of meetings. And lot of meeting I put to private, and I don't charge for those, you know.
It's, it's.
Can talk with, uh, Mr. Flint, you can talk with my secretary, I put lot of private, I do attend meetings, and I put private, I don't charge.
Doug, I'll talk to you about this tomorrow, okay?
Okay. I'm not here tomorrow, but Monday?
Monday is fine, I'll show it to you.
Okay.
I have it in black and white.
Okay.
And other, uh, these stipend, I believe we have secretary to the board and mayor, she should take care of that, you know, every stipend should go to her, then she can, uh, give to trustees whatever they want.
The trustees that complete them, hand them through the, to me.
Basically.
And I review them, and then they go through to finance for payment.
Well, I want copies from you.
Oh, I, I understand.
Okay.
We'll distribute, you know, I'll, I'll, first thing I'll do is we'll update the policy to bring back to the board to make sure the board approves the policy.
Correct.
Once the board approves the policy, we'll put that policy in place.
I thought we did that already.
You just added, you've added new language to the policy.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Right? So this new language needs to be added to the policy, we'll get the policy approved by the board, and then after that, we'll put the policy in effect.
And I, I don't know, to be frank, I want to eliminate, you know, stipend, you know, if they agree, let it go, you know. People, I mean, we are here, we don't need fifty dollar or twenty-five dollar, stop it, you know, if they want.
We would save seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Not seven thousand or one dollar, you know, the thing is, is a problem, you know. There was no problem for Linda Jackson, no problem when you take money, the only thing is problem is when Coker takes money.
Mr. Coker, we review.
And I attend a lot of meetings.
Never mind, I'm not gonna say.
Lot of meetings.
Can't get a word in edgway with you, period.
And you become aggravated, you know, when I talk, you know.
Chester, was that?
That's not nice.
I'm done.
You're done?
Yes, I'm done with this guy.
Next one in line, Mohammed, heads, uh, department heads.
Contract renewal.
Contract renewal.
Yeah. So, Mr. Peter?
Yes.
You or Mr. Flint, could you describe the process? What is the process of this contract renewal of all the department heads?
What, do you mean the reappointment?
Reappointment, yes. What is the process?
The mayor would submit names to the board, uh, with your advice and consent, and then department heads would either be renewed, um, or currently they serve in their capacity until a replacement is named.
Because in the last board meeting, or maybe not in the last previous one, the mayor said that board are the one who is delaying that. And this thing has been delaying since, when was it due? Is it May of last year, correct?
Myself?
I mean, the, all the department heads, contract and.
Appointments are up in May, yes.
In May, last year of May.
Yes.
And why they were not renewed yet?
I, I don't have an answer for that.
Who has the answer? Can someone? Why, mayor, why not you?
You ask me?
Yes, I'm asking you.
Are you yelling, you know?
I'm not yelling, I'm asking, these are all, because we lost, let me, let me just finish.
You have no right to yell at me.
Let, can I?
Help yourself.
Just calmly.
Chairman?
You cannot yell at me, you know.
Mr. Chairman?
Would you stop yelling in my ear?
Okay, we're talking, we're having a conversation.
Yeah.
Jesus, please.
So, Mr. Chairman, basically, I'm trying, because, you know, we have been blamed that the board are the one who is delaying that process, and we are the one, and because of that, we lost one of our brightest employees, Ms. Joanne.
Let's not go down that path.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying, because of that, yes.
You know, you know, saying is meaning, double meaning, you know.
Okay.
Can you stop him? Because I'm speaking. Can you, can you behave? Can you behave?
Guys, calm.
Can you behave?
Did you talk about cricket?
Yeah. So.
So.
He's your relative, right?
As, as you were saying.
I think in his mind, cricket is just, one thing is cricket only.
She got retirement.
All right, hold on, guys. Guys, all right, heads of departments, reappointment, this is what we're discussing.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Light, chairman, he has license to talk about, you know, Joanne, you know, some senior citizen, you know, some other people, you know.
We're just talking about.
When somebody is talking about, you know, director, he has no eyes, no hearing.
We're talking about directors, appointment.
Funny guy.
Go ahead, as you were saying.
Yes.
Can I?
Yes, I said that.
You're good. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Yes, please. Finish what you were saying about the appointments of that.
Yes, so, so my question is, since May, we have not renewed our department heads' contract, and that's not fair with them. That's not fair with any of the, uh, and I just need to know why, why can't we, why this thing does not comes to the board and, and, and gets, and, and, as Mr. Peter said, that the mayor has to appoint it, so mayor, would you do that, or, or still we have to wait for that? I just need a simple answer for that.
Yes, yes, I'm ready, and I told you in the beginning, May or June, that if you are ready to appoint, I mean, I will appoint to approve all those, uh, directors, I'm ready. And that was my answer six month ago, same answer today, it will be same after six month.
It's.
You have to do your job, you are not doing your job.
Okay, again, uh.
Okay, just not again, just answer, you know.
I'm doing my job, so it has to come to the board. Mr. Flint, is, could you please describe the process, so you know everyone can understand clearly? That what has to, because, you know, he again saying, oh, you have to do your job, so.
Really, how it, Peter can answer, because it really goes through the attorney's office to make a resolution to bring forward nominations from the mayor, but the mayor has to make the nominations to the.
So, so the keyword is the mayor?
Yes.
So it has to be started from the mayor?
Yes.
If I understand correct, correct?
Yes.
You need lot of time to understand, you know.
So it's, it's.
Mayor, you, how many times you said mayor?
It would be nicer, okay? All right, so, what I'm gathering, go ahead, are you done?
I think I'm done, yes.
What I'm gathering is that the, the, hang on, I'm talking now, shh. All right. The appointments, they haven't been made yet, they need to be made, we need an assistant village administrator, and we need to put, jog into this position, you know, and get this stuff done. That's, 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 there's no doubt about, we need to take care of that stuff. The assistant needs to happen, we're overworked up top there, and we got a lot of stuff that goes on, we need to take that, you know, in the consideration, get this done. That's all, we just need to get that done. All right, are you done? Go ahead, Pat.
Okay, but the only problem with that is, we can't get anything done unless the mayor makes the appointments.
This is correct, unless.
That, that, that is his decision to make the appointments.
Correct.
If you don't, he hasn't made them for a year, so when he makes up his mind to make the appointments, then he'll, then he'll tell us, and then we'll vote.
And then we'll vote, correct, okay.
That's the simple question I was asking. Thank you, Dept. Mayor, for explaining that, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else comments before I close it?
Yes, I, I have.
Go ahead, Mary, please.
Do you know, we are six trustees, and the reason we're six trustees is because when we make a decision, if we were three and three, then the mayor here is the tiebreaker. But sometimes, like this wanting to get these, uh, uh, village supervisors elected, if, if it's only the mayor's decision, why don't we have any say so? I have a problem understanding that.
Mary, under.
If we're six of us, and we're supposed to be running this village with the mayor, you're telling us that we have no say so. And now, let me finish though, because I, I have a problem understanding that. I was always under the impression, the mayor makes decisions, we have to accept them, but if we don't like them, we can vote on the decisions that he's made that we didn't think were good. Right now, we're all in limbo, we have no say so, I, I don't understand this. So would someone please explain it to me, why we can't say what we like? In other words, I, I'm not trying to take away from the mayor, he should make the decisions, but if he can't make a decision, that's what we're here for, and right now, he doesn't want to make a decision. So that means he can't make them, so we should make them.
That's his, that's his position, that's his duty, he could make appointments.
I know he can, but if he doesn't want to.
We can't do anything about it, Mary.
Mary, under, under the statutes and the village's ordinance, it's within the, the village president's purview to make appointments to department heads and to the village engineer as the village attorney. It's, we're with, it's his purview to do that.
Why did it take an year and a half?
And it's only, it's only within his purview to make that appointment, and it's under that, it's the board's, with the board's advice and consent, that person could be approved or denied. Um, if he does not make appointments, the law provides that the people serving in those capacities as department heads, village attorney, village engineer, will serve in that capacity until a new person is appointed.
But Peter, my, my question is, you know, these people elected us.
No, I understand, but the law doesn't provide.
Do our job.
The law doesn't provide trustees to make that decision.
And I can understand if it were just one or two of us that feel this way, but if, if the mayor doesn't want to make a decision, I feel that we should be able to.
If there was a path to proceed that way, I would advise you of that, but there is no path to.
Mary, missile. I'm, I wanted to make this decision, I do want to make this decision, I don't like the way it's working. The thing is, what happened, I heard from very authentic, uh, source that some trustee are not going to approve one director. If you have, I mean, anybody, any trustee, they have some problem with any director, come to me, you know, talk with me, what is that problem, you know? Resolve that, I'm ready to appoint you. If somebody say, mayor does not want to do, I do want to do, you know, but I do want to do in a right way, you know. I don't believe he said, she said, all these directors, they are working, they are there, I'm happy, they are happy, some showed their concern, I talk with those directors, they said, mayor, we are fine now, you know. I do want to appoint when I have, uh, from, surety from trustee from board that no unjust will be done with one director or, you know, that's the reason.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Well, mayor, I just feel like this, for one person, and I, I think I know who you mean, and I don't want to mention any names, but for one person, you are depriving the other, the others of a position that, that they're entitled to, and I, I don't think that's fair.
Ma'am, the thing is, we are going by orders, they are working, they are getting their paycheck, they are okay, I'm fine, but I don't like this standstill, you know, I do want to appoint, but I want surety from board that it will be for every director, you know, not just for, you know, if they have some problem, talk with me, you know.
All right, are we done?
Uh, no, just one thing. So, Mary, just to be, we are running a village on conspiracy theories, basically.
You are.
Okay, okay, guys.
This mayor is running conspiracy theories.
Guys, 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 we lost it.
That's what it is.
You are.
All right, real subject.
Who are helping your relatives for the contract, mayor?
All right, all right, wait, 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 I got my, I'm very important here, I got one more thing, don't you dare leave yet, Pat.
I was just about to say it.
Oh, not yet, all right. Mine is entertainment, this is a good subject, this is fun.
You mean our board meeting?
We have, and I am not talking about the board meeting, okay? My idea of entertainment is, we've had this in the past, we've done this in the past, um, we used to have a large trailer that we had for a stage. Um, I had attended a couple other functions in different towns and noticed that they have the same basic idea, but a, a larger structure that would open up like a clamshell and had lights and speakers and sound systems. I would love to, in the next budget, I guess it was the fall under keats problem, um, to see something like this come around, because we could use this at park parties, we could even set it up at a park and have, you know, a band in the park night, you know, where we can, you know, even use the kids from the schools and, and, and show them, showcase them, you know, their, their talents, whether it be cheer or, or band or something, or get a band in that wants to do a night in the park. I mean, our park parties, our, our Glendale Heights Fest, and all the other things that we use this for, it would be a huge asset, and I'd really like to see something like this happen.
So, uh, for your information, currently I am actually and have been for a while now, looking for different stages, we've got some options that I'm currently, uh, looking into. This would not be used for fest, I want to be upfront, because that stage is bigger and requires a bigger lift and all that to hold all the stuff.
No, I'm saying, we use that two stages.
But we're looking for a stage that we can put, uh, we do have planned some concerts in the park.
Yes.
And some movies in the park for this year, this would be a great help to have that, so there'll be something in the budget that is there, it's, they're not cheap, but, uh, the information will be there, and you. But, uh, the information will be there and you guys can make that decision. And if you approve it, then we'll proceed.
I mean, I, like I said, the town that is south of us had one that I was, I was highly impressed with. I mean, it was a mechanical feat, the way it just opened up. You've come to. It's former. You've come to agreement with the mayor, because this is one of his visions for our bandstands. And Keith has been researching at nauseam and his staff, trying to find, uh, a stage. Uh, when he says they're not cheap.
They're not cheap.
Wait until you see the prices on these things. Three, four hundred bucks, we're good, right, you know?
Mike, we had bands at the gazebo.
Well, I, I, I found one on Alibaba, but I didn't want to pay the shipping from China, but it, they're.
Alibaba is still operating? I think.
They're, they're not, uh, I mean, they'll last forever, right, hopefully? It'll be a good investment for us, we'll get a lot of use out of it.
Absolutely.
But it's not a cheap investment.
And we're looking at ones similar to what you're talking about. Something that'll be travel, be pulled by a trailer.
Yes.
Can be put into place. Some of them in thirty minutes, they're set up.
They're hydraulic.
Yeah, you hit the button and there they go.
I like being, I like all the bells and whistles, that'd be fun, but, you know.
I've got some information, so we're working on that, that'll be something at least we bring to the board as an option. Um, obviously, it's up to you to approve that at the board meeting.
It'll be in the new, it'll be in the new budget.
Yeah.
Coming up, that, uh, you'll see, but.
I mean, what, what kind of, what, what kind of fuss are you talking about a stage? I mean.
So, honestly, it depends on, it, it, it depends on size, they range, um, something that's automatic. The one we were looking at was a hundred and twenty.
And the low end.